All right, oh my goodness. Welcome to you all, thank you for joining us at the Monday, November 5th, 2018, 18-18, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all here with us this evening. We do have a busy agenda, so we're going to get started. I did want to mention, I think probably most of you all know that Hugh Brown passed away, I guess it was last night, and he was really an icon and a fixture in our community. So if we could maybe just do a quick moment of silence, I think would be fitting for him. All right, thank you. Our sympathies certainly go out to his friends and relatives and the folks at the store. So it won't be the same without him, that's for sure.
Mr. Mayor, according to news press, the memorial service is Saturday, December 8th, at 10:00 a.m. at Falls Church Presbyterian Church.
All right, well that's good to know. Mr. Shields, do we want to go ahead and let's see if we've got, find my agenda here. All right, why don't we get on to it? Our first item is the ordinance to amend the city code to update language referring to persons with disabilities. Who's going to be handling that matter?
I will, Mayor, and members of council. Our intention in bringing this forward tonight is simply to update the city code in every place where it appears where outdated language relating to adults with intellectual disabilities is used in the city code, to update that language to current usage. And so it appears in the zoning code, in the context of group homes, it includes in areas in the tax code and other areas. And so it's basically just a housekeeping measure to bring your code up to date. So with that, we'd like to put this on the agenda for next week for first reading, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to ask them, answer them, or bring them back to staff so you have an answer on Monday night.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, nice work, I think that one's done. Let's move on to our work session with the CACT, which is, I think, the meat of the matter tonight. We're delighted you all have chosen to join us and for the great work you guys do. Would you all like to come up to the table so we can have maybe an informal discussion? I don't know.
So we have our chairman Andrea Comont and Mr. Paul Baldino, a member of the CACT. And Jeff Sykes, why don't you come up here and join us here at the table?
Dave Gustafson.
Oh, Dave, Mr. Gustafson. You can come on up, we have a spot right next to Ms. Mester.
Thank you all for your service, and we know it's a busy time, a lot going on transportation-wise in the city, and we're really working on walkability issues and bikability issues and safety issues. So we know you guys are very busy in the work you're doing, but thank you very much. Mr. Shields, how does you propose the conversation begun? Is there anything in particular?
Well, just by way of introduction, we do have a memo that provides an overview of some of the recent work of the CACT. Tonight is an opportunity, the council likes to touch base with all of our boards and commissions just to make sure there's good communication back and forth, and if there are any needs that you have, or any priorities that you have, that you want to make the council be aware of. And so that's the intent of tonight's discussion.
Well, Jeff actually had a really great memo, and I think that contained a few questions that we have, I'm sorry, I should have brought it. I think we definitely would like to discuss the NTC program and how you all think that's going, if you've been hearing anything about positive or negative, how the program, we've addressed, I think, two cases now under the new program, and we have a few more on the docket. And we've had a few different events this year. Parking Day was the, we were really excited to celebrate that this year. Akita Rousey on staff really took the lead in making that happen, which was great. We've had a few joint meetings. We also have some open questions about potentially having a 20 mile an hour speed limit on some of the smaller residential streets in Falls Church City. There've been sort of a question for a while about whether that was permissible, and the lawyers said that it could be potentially, if that was something that we wanted to do, we would have the authority to do it. And then I think one thing we definitely want to address is the zoned residential permit parking. This is coming up a lot with the new development in the area, and I'm hopeful we can get some guidance tonight from council on how to deal with residential requests for zoned parking permits near new developments. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Paul?
Uh, no, thank you.
There's a lot more in the memo, though, and we're curious to hear from you all, and if there's anything else that you want to discuss.
All right, again, thank you for your good work, and we know this is a busy time with so many projects going on and so many in the pipeline and planned and discussed, so thank you for your service and your guidance to us. Why don't we just open it up to questions and comments? Are the folks on council having anything they want to, Mr. DeCee?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you're looking at reducing the, possibly reducing the speed limits on our streets, on certain residential streets to 20 miles an hour. And the fact that you've met with the city attorney and have determined that we do indeed have that authority, if you could just share with us what the next steps are and what the range of the streets are, and maybe some preliminary criteria for how that might apply. I would assume that it is something that we want to be proactive about, we don't want to react to an incident that would compel us, force us to take some steps in a reactive mode. So if you could just say something about reducing the speed limit from 25 to 20 on certain streets, how that might qualify, I think the citizens of this city would appreciate that information.
I think, I feel like that might be more of a question for staff, so I'm going to let, I'm going to let Jeff address that.
We really haven't gotten too far into it yet. Some of the guidance we got from the city attorney was that there needed to be an engineering or a technical study done prior to just changing the speed limit. It's not clear in what that entails, so I guess it's sort of up to us to be able to develop whatever the criteria are. My thoughts are that you look at streets particularly with fairly low volume, obviously neighborhood-type streets, not arterials, where the volume may be fairly low and so on. Again, this is, 20 miles an hour is fairly hard to keep them honest, if you will. Enforcement is a possibility, but there's limited resources for that, too. So my thought, at least initially, is that we would have it, yeah, a limited number of places initially.
So if I could just follow up, I appreciate the thinking that you've put into this that perhaps you could look at the number of children on the streets, children and maybe dogs. I say that only half jokingly with regard to dogs, because I notice the dog walkers just tend to take over the streets. And while I think that 97% of the traffic is respectful, mindful of children in the streets playing and not noticing the traffic and dog walkers, that the first step here is to actually send the message that we can actually do this, and so let's try that and see how that works. Yes, I understand the concern about doing enforcement, but I think the better part of this is to send the message that we understand that reducing the speed limit by another five miles an hour from 25 to 20 is, which gives us the ability to save more lives, because we know that there's a much reduced mortality at 20 miles an hour than at 25. So thank you. So the last question I have is, when do you think you might have something to report back to us?
Sorry, on the 25 mile an hour?
On the 20 mile an hour.
I'd be hopeful that we could have some more information, maybe in the next three months or so.
Seems reasonable, right?
Yeah. I wonder if you think that these, the streets being made 25 miles, should that be a resident request? Should that be like the neighborhood traffic calming program, so, you know, people who would like to have their streets have lower speed because there are a lot of kids on the streets, should they be requesting that?
Well, my thinking is that we kind of know where some of the cut-throughs are at this point. And so let's perhaps start with that, instead of making this a citywide effort, which I think would tend to, even though be informative, would also slow it down. I'm thinking of maybe perhaps a pilot, just to see how that works, so let's do some streets, see how that works, and then go on from there. So I said, you know, let's key in on where there's the appropriate traffic and known places where people's speed, and certainly if you want to put this out for wide distribution for people's opinions, I'm sure that everybody will tell you they want those speed limits reduced to the street from 25 to 20, and maybe 15 wouldn't be too bad either. So thank you.
Or I have two, you guys figured out.
So I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to square, you know, what I feel like we're doing, which is our very best in this area of neighborhood traffic calming, with talent at every level, on the CACT, your staff, all reasonable available resources, with the, you know, persistent feeling and evidence that comes to us that says we're just not doing enough. And I don't quite know, you know, what it is that we can do more of, but I hope that we can begin that discussion tonight and carry it on through the budget season. As I read the memo here, it seems that the biggest hope for resources to step up our number of projects that we do are, you know, going to be in the form of grants, which take, as we've learned, some time to come to us. And I think it's just a real challenge to tell folks who feel like their kids are going to get mashed, you know, at the bus stop, that we're going to get around to that, you know, in year four or five. It's just, it's just not going to cut it. We've got to figure out a way to do something, some things. Now, your light approaches, I think, are the, are the way that I would suggest we spend more of our effort, whether it's painting stop ahead on the road, or painting, you know, rumble strips, thermoplastic rumble strips, or, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what to call them, solutions, but at least tactics that create the impression that, you know, we understand that it's a problem, the growing rudeness in our society and obliviousness to paying attention to traffic laws, and that we understand, you know, I mean, when I started on the CACT, the city barely had 10,000 people. We've got, what are we up to now, 40, we've got a third more people. So, and a lot of those people are walking and biking and doing all the things that we want to see more of here. But if we're going to have people doing more walking and biking and so forth, then I think we need to step up our game on neighborhood traffic control. And the only reason I wanted to go first was that I know others have worked hard on this, Ms. Hardy has a long list of projects that she's already put together, and I'm curious to listen to hear how that list of 20-some projects squares with the list that you've got on your attachment one here, of active cases, of which there are four bullets, qualified but not yet selected, of which there are five bullets, right there is nine projects that I assume, you know, you all have looked at enough to believe that something needs to be done. And what I'd really like to come away with before we get into the budget season is an understanding of, you know, if we apply more resources to this, do we have the staff to use those resources? Because if we don't, there's no point in applying the resources. But if we, if we do not, why not? Is it a matter of needing to hire more people who are contractors or more permanent staff? Because it seems that this is an area that the Falls Church of the future needs to devote more attention to. You know, none of this is criticism, as I said at the beginning, of anybody here right now, because we're all working as hard as we can, it's just, it's just not enough.
Was there a question in there?
I think the question, how can we get by, how can we accelerate the pace?
Well, I would agree with Phil that even if we had more funding for grant, we still only have one, Jeff, and Jeff does a great job, I think, on these projects, but I do think that the staff resources are a limiting factor in the number of projects we can get done. What the answer is to that, I don't, I don't know. And maybe you have a different perspective, Jeff, but that's been a conversation we've been having for a few years.
We, as a rule, the CACT and staff made a rule that we do not take more than two projects at one time. However, as people come to the council with complaints and they bring, and they are a crowd of people and all that, the priorities get a little shifted, if you will. If you'll notice on there, there are two projects in there that are above our two level, which are the Lincoln Avenue and West Street. And we ended up doing some work on those projects sort of out of turn, if you will, to do at least light solutions, the striping and pedestrian islands and so on, on those streets. And we're, we've made application for a new grant, hopefully we'll find out in the spring for $800,000 to, for traffic calming construction on those projects and the, on some of the other projects on the list. That being said, there's still a resources issue. I've been kind of spread thin, just like a lot of my colleagues, on a lot of the other things that come along. And I personally have not been able to devote as much attention as I'd like to, to the programs. So it is somewhat of a resources issue.
If I might add to that, it's very hard to exaggerate. Like sometimes when we go to our meetings, as well as yours, you hear a group of citizens who say they want the, that's, I don't think we've ever had a case where that's been always some people who are opposed. There's some people who feel that they want pumps, there's others who want the, there's others who want bump outs, and Jeff, and to somewhat, much lesser extent, remember, hopefully I find the folks who are looking at acceptable solution and getting some level of agreement that we, that we can improve. It's a very notorious process, and I have much of a fear of.
Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Look to House.
Great, and I think Mary Beth wanted to. On that note, before we lose that thought, so I really appreciate kind of that context, because I think in general you'll hear from this council that walkability, safety, in general, all the transportation work that you all do is going to be one of our top priorities, and has been one of our top priorities. And I think in general, we'd love to see just more throughput from the NTC program. I had a conversation with Paul Stoddard on Friday, and he actually offered really good context. He was like, you know, five years ago, we didn't have this program, we were getting none of these things done, and now we're getting two done a year. So while it may not be as much as we'd like, I think it's just important context to have is that we are actually, have mobilized a process and people against it, so I think that was good to know. The one thing I really liked that you guys were starting to do with NTC is really put the onus back on the neighborhood, which I think is the gist of the process, right? You really only can start the process if 50% of your neighborhood has said you want to do it. I wonder if we can take that a step further, so to minimize the staff resource part of it? I hear the concern that a lot of times it requires staff a lot of time to please everybody on the street on, you know, what exactly the solution's going to be. So I wonder if they doesn't make that one point of contact and say, well, you know, if you want this to go fast and you want something done, this is, you're going to be your representative, and so if you have beef with it, you know, that's the person that you're going to need to address, and that's the person that staff's going to work with, to really minimize the work that the city has to do with interfacing with the whole neighborhood. And I think if we really couch it as a, we want more throughput for this as well, and the way we accomplish that is really minimize the neighborhood interactions, not again to upset anybody, but really to streamline the work that Jeff has to do, so you don't have to really work with the entire neighborhood with a solution. So just one idea. I did want to answer one of the questions you threw out around speed limits. So I think you asked whether it should be a pilot in certain areas, or whether it should be a request. I wonder if it can be one of the many NTC tools we use. So when we look at cases that come through, you know, we could think about speed bumps, we can think about traffic, you know, curb extensions, maybe lowering the speed limit is just another tool in that toolbox. There may be other certain streets where we can also pilot that, and I think I'd look to staff's expertise and figure out where those streets might be. But I'd be hesitant to say that citizens can just request or demand it, because I do think that's a slippery slope, everyone's going to ask it. But if we let, you know, staff who has the expertise on where it is best deployed, that might be a good approach. I also did want to talk about scooters. So I was kind of dubious at first as the, I guess, the usefulness of scooters and kind of the grand scheme of the transportation modes that we have, but I am more, more convinced these days, especially now that I've seen bird scooters in town. And so I want to make sure that we are not going to be reactive to this, and we start thinking about what our policy is, whether we allow them, whether they should be on sidewalks, a bike trail, out in the streets. They are at our borders, and I've seen probably five at this point in the past month actually come in our borders on Washington, near the metro stations, and even on the bike trails. So just something to be thinking about, I do want to make sure we think about that proactively, and less, I think in general, it's going to be less of a learning curve for people than even riding bikes, and it could be a really useful tool, I think, as we think about, again, all the different transportation options we offer people. One of the, I guess, requests I have is, as we think about walkability being a priority, I'd love the CACT to kind of give us recommendations on what you think the top, say, five walkability things we should do would be, whether it's spot improvements in certain areas, like, hey, these are really big problem spots, we continue to hear from people. Because I think we have our list of things that we often talk about and we hear from citizens, but you all are much closer to this, so I think it would be helpful as we think about going into the budget season, you know, what are the top five things you all would recommend we really tackle, as we think about resources and dollars going against it? I think that would really help, help council with figuring out how to go after those. I think that is it. But thank you, thank you for all the good work and the really thorough report.
Great, thanks, Letty. I'm also a big fan of scooters and have been also seeing them around the city, and I rode one myself, actually, down the bike trail, so, very, very useful. No, but I only went like at 60% speed.
I asked the city, I asked, she's not here, but I asked the city attorney.
She's here.
Oh, yeah, there you are. And I gather that we can't do anything about helmets for scooter wearers.
That's correct. We don't have authority to require helmets for scooter workers, scooter riders.
Okay. Well, I think that's, I personally think that's an issue. I mean, you know, you don't have to be going very fast. I have a good friend, I'm sure we all have stories, but, you know, a good friend of mine at CQ back in the day who fortunately had a helmet on when she just ran into, you know, somebody forced her over, and she ran into the no parking sign and went head over and, you know, didn't end up scrambled eggs because she had a helmet on. I don't know, I mean, I, I just feel like we ought to try to encourage as much as we can the use of helmets when you're riding motorized devices, for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I had one more thing. Andrea, you asked about permit parking, what we thought about that?
Yes, I do want to talk about that tonight, and I think Paul has some thoughts about that, too.
So my one question, I guess, before jumping into what to do about the cases in front of you is, what has been our experience with Winter Hill? So they were our first kind of official case in recent years of where we responded to citizens' concern about spill-over parking from a development, so I assume the ones coming forward are from that as well. Have we actually experienced spill-over into the neighborhood where the permit parking has helped, or has it been overly reactive?
I'll let Jeff answer that, but, yeah.
I don't know, we haven't done a follow-up, but it's really hard to monitor that, to see what's happened. I have not received complaints from people in Winter Hill indicating that it's, they're not being able to find parking, for example. So I think it's gone pretty well, and we developed, of course, a visitor pass situation and a flex pass for people for like caregivers that needs to stay for overnight or for longer periods of time. And we're in the process now developing Zone Two, which would be around the Founder's Row development.
Saying the two interesting points, is number one, because I think there were reduced parking requirements at 301 West Broad, I think one of the hypotheses we had is if you allow a developer to build with reduced requirements, do you also attract residents who don't bring as many cars? So I'd be interested in that, and then the second is, then do you actually have the spill-over into the neighborhood or not? So it'd be nice to just know as a case study how that went, because I think the theory is that that's what should happen.
Jeff, would we be able to get data from West Broad on the number of residents who have vehicles?
Yeah, so we can get that.
My question is similar to what Letty just asked, and what I'm wondering is, did we actually need residential permit parking there? There's a lot of staff time and money and effort that went into the signs, and was it necessary? And you said you've gotten no complaints, so that means it's working, but did we even need to do it?
I understand there was a commitment made.
Right.
By council, I believe, to provide protection, if you will, for overflow parking from, for the Winter Hill people.
Right. No, I understand there was the commitment, I just wonder if our response was bigger than what was actually needed for the situation. And I know it will change over time.
Right.
But is there a way even to measure that? Did we need to do that? And do we need to do it other places?
We could look at, I mean, one metric would be, how many tickets are we riding? And I don't know the answer to that question, but I could ask, we could look at, see if there are any other metrics.
That one I find interesting, because it's the overnight parking they're most worried about.
Yes.
But the Zone Two Founder's Row, they're more worried about the daytime parking, I think.
And.
They're worried about everything.
They're worried about everything.
Right, right. So that one may have different requirements as you're talking about it, right?
The regulations will be different on Park Avenue.
Right, right. And then how about zoned areas near Metro? We still have those as well, permit parking there?
My understanding is there are locations like along North Jefferson Street, for example, not North Jefferson.
Like Van Buren.
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess it's west, or east, rather, where there's been concern, and there are signs that indicate that there's permit parking for like, you have to have a permit, which in that case is the city decal, as I understand. Yeah, we're not, we need to look at this overall as sort of a long-term plan as we get into these individual zones and so on, as well as look at what we've done in the past, because there are a number of different ways to get this permit parking and so on. So it needs really to be updated.
Jeff, do you know if there's any sort of map of like where the permit zones exist?
Yeah, we do have that map, and it's a hodgepodge. It's a, it's an organic thing that has grown up over time.
To me, I feel like there's this philosophical question at the root of this, which is like, what expectations should residents have of parking on the public streets in front of their houses? Or what are they entitled to, if anything? And I think that's a question for you all, and I think it should be applied evenly throughout the city, so we don't have a hodgepodge. That's my personal view. And I don't know what the answer to that question is, but I do think that our streets are public spaces, and I think that if people live near amenities, then other people shouldn't be prevented from accessing those amenities unduly because of permit parking restrictions.
Yeah, I think the answer to that is that data, like whether we're actually seeing spill-over parking from developments, and I think that helps answer that.
I mean, I can say anecdotally, I live on Pennsylvania Avenue, we have the Spectrum at the end of the street, and I think Dan would agree that we've seen a large increase on Park Avenue near the Spectrum and on the bottom part of Pennsylvania. I think it's likely due to that development, but I don't know, and we, the residents have just adjusted.
I think we'll probably see the same thing.
I think Ms. Hardy gets to a point, though, we're being pressed around Founder's Row. We have a group, I think Jeff has had several contacts with the residents in that area already, and we have a group coming before us a week from Wednesday to talk about the specifics that they want. So I think we had a, we're really kind of, not that we think you're going to be able to give us the answers tonight, but we kind of wanted to understand your philosophy on this, for these major developments. Do you feel like parking should be self-contained, that there shouldn't be any spill-over to the neighbors? What level of on. What level of on-street parking should a resident expect? And do we, should they expect that it's going to be adjacent to their home? What consideration should be given to visitors, including other city residents, who want to park near an area to be restricted in order to use public facilities, West End Park, or other businesses that are not a part of this major development like Founder's Row? And how do you, how do you, how do you think of that relative to daytime, nighttime, weekday, weekend? These are kind of some of the answers we're, some of the questions we're beginning to struggle with. Again, we don't expect you to give us the answers, one, two, three, but we wanted to let you know those are the issues and get your thoughts, it will be helpful for us.
And when
Give you some thoughts.
When should these restrictions be implemented? Should they be implemented before anything is even built? Before we know anything about what might happen with spillover parking? Or should they be implemented after the fact when there may be problems and the residents may, you know, be stressed?
Do you have a question you wanted to?
I mean, I don't specifically do that, but
Well, I mean, I guess I would just say philosophically myself, I do believe that new developments need to park themselves. And I don't really think it's appropriate for them to contemplate spilling out throughout the neighborhood. And I think it's sort of the compact that we have with new development that, you know, we're going to do all we can to protect the integrity of established neighborhoods. And so, to my view, that really ought to be our goal, is to provide adequate parking or TDM, Transportation Demand Management Plans, that will keep folks basically contained within the project and maybe there are occasions when people spill out, but to really try to minimize and mitigate those circumstances. That's my philosophical approach to new development, but others may feel differently.
Yeah, generally along those lines. I just, I find it difficult when you're constrained, land constrained like this, and you're adding new developments, to be able to perfectly plan excess parking at developments. It's difficult. I mean, some of it's got to be data-driven after the fact. I don't know if you can perfectly plan for zone residential parking around expected developments and be able to do that perfectly. I, for one, am a believer that there is a balance around more concentrated, dense development within the neighborhood to prevent spillover where you've got some type of zoned permit based on time. And you guys had mentioned daytime versus evening versus weekend. I think that we can strike a balance there. For me, just generally, I think that your committee is probably one of the most important committees for the city over the next five to 10 years. I mean, being proactive around neighborhood traffic calming and transportation and parking, I think, are going to be things that if we don't put the full weight of effort and resources behind that now, we're really going to be kicking ourselves here as things start to ramp up. And as Falls Church continues to, it seems like, maybe I'm just more sensitive the older that I get with kids, but it seems more and more every day that it becomes a pass-through. And so dealing with some of those cut-through issues in neighborhoods, I think, are incredibly important. So for me, you've got a commitment, from my perspective, to take a hard look at budget and resources, whatever we need to get it done. Jeff's a great guy, but he can only be spread so, so, so thin here. But you've got a commitment to me, from me personally, to figure out what those solutions are. And if it's resource-constrained and we need to figure that out from a budget perspective. So I applaud you guys for what you're doing and continue to be a squeaky wheel in getting the community together to solve these problems. I think it's incredibly important.
Duncan?
Yeah, to try to answer your question, I mean, you are on the front lines of, you know, the battle. I mean, we fully understand that these large projects that we approve are going to cause impacts in the neighborhood. They're going to change the way things are. And therefore, we need to be especially sensitive to groups that come to you, because they're going to come to you first, with concerns and requests of the nature that we got from around Harris Teeter and that we're going to get from Founder's Row. Having said that, in a world of unlimited resources, we would do that. And we would also, you know, do the traffic calming and better sidewalks and better lighting and all the other things that make it a more walkable, safe environment, so you don't have to use your car. Since we are not living in a world of unlimited resources, my personal preference is to try to apply as much effort as we can to the architecture of the streets and sidewalks so that we make it a safer, more convenient, more pleasant place to walk. So if I were choosing how to allocate time, I would allocate relatively more time to that and encourage cycling, walking, and, you know, create an atmosphere in the city that enables at least the people who live here not to have to get in their car to, you know, go honestly, you know, a quarter mile away to go to the movies. So anything you can do, you know, along those lines, I think, would be helpful. You know, we haven't really, I don't think, gotten back to answering the question of the list of 21 or so projects that Ms. Hardy compiled and how that lines up with the list that you have here. I really would like to know, you know, what it is that we're talking about, you know? What is the scope of the problem? If, you know, somebody dropped $2 million on us, what would we spend it on? I mean, the amount of money that's talked about in these grant applications is pretty significant. It's like a million and a half, I think. So if that came through, you know, again, can we be ready to do some things? And we rely on you all to let us know about that. I mean, it's, some of these things may seem, may be small, and it may seem small, but as we try to do so many big things here in town, the confidence level of the population to accept those big things is influenced by our ability to do the little things well. And that's why what you all do is so important, because transportation issues are really, I think, the first thing that people kind of interact with when it comes to moving into the city, particularly if they have children. And creating a sense of confidence that we understand what the problem is, yeah, we've identified your street, it's on our list, it's, you know, number nine. You know, if we get, you know, $2 million, you know, we're going to get that done in the next two years. To be able to, you know, map it out and tell them. And honestly, if it's not on the list, it's probably going to be three or four years. And you just need to know that. We'll tell you that. And if you don't like what you're hearing from us, then you need to vote some new people in who'll, you know, apply more pressure to
What?
get more money. Yeah, so that's my attempt to answer your question. Before we go, I did want to thank Bill for attending the bridge meeting, the bike bridge meeting.
Oh, Dave.
I'm sorry, Dave. Bill? Where did Bill come from?
We have a bill. We have a bill, too.
Oh, okay. At any rate, that was, and Tim Stevens was there, too, so we were well represented in the city, asked good questions. Just wanted to make sure to mention that.
All right, are there other questions? Yes, of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Just to your question on the zone residential permit parking, it does seem like before the problem exists, it's hard to know what the problem is. But again, you don't want to be non-responsive to people and say, well, we're just going to have to wait till it's a disaster. So you do have to balance those two things. But I think any data that we have from 301 West Broad would be helpful in trying to answer those questions. And then either do, you know, interim solutions along the way or, because there's going to be problems with construction as well. And that may also affect where people can park in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I would say with respect to Founder's Row, I really think we need to have something in place before this thing starts coming out of the ground because, A, I think that was just part of the discussion through the whole time, that we would address those issues. As you may recall as well, this project actually takes three residential houses that were part of the streetscape and turns them into a commercial building. So we've, you know, by our action, we've drawn this project out from the boundaries of, I guess, west and Broad and sort of pulled it into parks. So to me, I think it's very important that we really find a solution, or an attempted solution, for that comes too far out of the box.
Makes sense.
And on that note, I just, I do want to thank Mr. Sykes. He's been very proactive in working with the Park Avenue and Grove Avenue neighbors and moving that forward. Ms. Hardy, you have another question?
Just a quick thing. Agree, I think, with the sentiment that in general, development should park themselves. I do have a, want to make sure we emphasize the difference between daytime and nighttime overnight parking, because I do think that during the day, when people are gone at work and the space is just sitting there, we should think about those complementary uses and not just waste a public utility. So I think we should give more thought to that, too.
Yeah, if I could just I've just one, I'm sorry, just one note. Generally, our policy is on residential streets where we do have the permit parking, to allow two-hour parking during the day for just that reason, and that's the case in Winter Hill. Park Avenue is a special case, and that really, I think, goes back to the genesis of trying to address some of the, you know, a basket of neighborhood concerns as part of Founder's Row. So we are doing something different for Park Avenue, and I think we need to acknowledge that and be aware of that. It may set a precedent that goes against what you're articulating, but we'll try to, in the future, try to articulate that a little bit clearer in the beginning also.
I mean, it is worth noting that development does not always park itself. I mean, the existing very successful yoga studio there, right next to the Taco Bell, on, you know, peak-use nights, and it's nighttime, apparently, that the people there do their thing. You know, the parking on Ellison Street is just cheek to chow. I mean, you can barely get one car through there, much less, you know, two cars or a fire engine. And I don't know what to do about that. I mean, those of us who choose to live within walking distance of amenities, the trade-off is that, you know, people are going to be parking in front of our house and walking up to the same amenities that we are walking to from our houses. So, you know, people who live back deeper into the city may have an expectation that the space in front of their house is their parking space. But those of us who are within walking distance, you know, are willing, need to be thinking about the fact that that's the trade-off that we make for being able to walk up to places ourselves. One other thing about traffic counts that's mentioned here in this note, that is an issue that I've asked about most every year, particularly as it relates to Broad Street, because, you know, we do not turn a shovel here without somebody saying, you know, we're overrun with traffic on Broad Street. And the numbers over time, I think, don't actually show that, but it's helpful to have an annual refresher on that, so we can tell people, I've heard the managers say it, you know, in sort of essay form, but to be able, actually to have the numbers of traffic counts on Broad Street at all hours of the day and in, you know, a couple of seasons of the year is good information to take to citizens when we are doing a development on Broad Street, where our argument is that it is, you know, we are so small here that there's nothing, no one thing we can do that's going to affect the bulk of the traffic that's coming through town. It's helpful if we have numbers to actually back that assertion up.
Why don't we go ahead and, was that, are you responding, going to respond, or is that a comment that needed, were you seeking a response to your, okay. Okay, why don't we move on now? We do have a closed session that will probably take some time. If we can, why don't we move on to our discussion about parking, as led by Ms. Hardy, if we can?
And CACT is welcome to sit and join us, because I know you have members who are part of our working group. I'll also invite Ed Salzberg and Sally Cole up to join us from the chamber in the EDA. I'll preface this by thanking members of the kind of parking working group, including Sally and Ed and Andrea and other members of the CACT, EDA, staff, and businesses and citizens, who've spent a lot of time talking to us about what they perceive the issues to be on parking and suggested ideas. And thank you, Cindy, for getting that up. I talk really fast as it is, and given that we're trying to stick to a schedule, I'm going to talk even faster. But I think by now, maybe everyone has seen this either being posted or seen circulated. So I'm going to not go through every slide in the deck, but I want to make sure we cover the highlights. So a couple key takeaways. A lot of this work originated from EDC discussions probably in the past year. And in this recommendation deck, there's going to be a lot of illustrative examples on what we've observed, as well as what some actionable recommendations are. And I think the main thrust of the conversation is, where do we go from here? How does the rest of council feel about this? Are we willing to make these investments? Where do we go as we head into FY '20 budget cycle? Next slide. So that's just a quick layout. Again, I'm not going to go through every slide. It's posted for those who want to follow from home or read offline. Next slide. So current situation. I think everyone knows that parking in the city is really hodgepodge. We've got a mix of on-street parking that we've been talking about, a couple private garages that the city's negotiated, plus a couple of dedicated city lots. But it's really spaces interspersed everywhere else, and there's really no central dedicated spaces. Next slide. When you actually look at what downtown, and we consider downtown kind of everything from Washington over to around the 300 block of Broad Street, there's actually a lot of asphalt parking. And so when people say, gosh, there's no parking, when you stare at that map, you're like, wow, there actually is a lot of parking. Some of it, albeit, is very, is private. But when people complain about no parking, it's really surprising, because we actually have two garages that have hundreds of spaces and then tons of surface parking lots. So I think it's worth noting that, what that view looks like. Next slide. So we spent time talking to three constituent groups: citizens, business owners, and property owners. Obviously, they all have very different takes on what the current state of parking is. I won't read you kind of the quotes that we've heard from people, but generally, everyone believes that they're different issues. Citizens, you know, don't necessarily want to walk or bike, the people who do choose to do that, but the ones who aren't physically able to or coming outside of Falls Church, they want to be able to park in front of the business they're going to. And that's really just a cultural expectation change, I think, that we will talk about later on. And no one really wants to be towed. Business owners feel like they should get dedicated spaces. Property owners feel like they already pay for these spaces through their taxes, and so there's really no incentive to share in their opinion. Next slide. So the next probably three or four slides are examples of actually what we actually see in the downtown. And so you'll see lots of pictures. Acknowledging really good intentions. Everyone wants to do a good job signing their spaces that no one actually gets towed. We have an opposite issue. Despite those good intentions, we have an overproliferation of signs. There are signs everywhere. When you walk between the 100 and 300 blocks, you actually have sign overload, because you don't know really which signs to pay attention to. So we've got a combination of street signs, combination of markings on the pavement, signs where it's got a list of, let's see, like, six or eight businesses on there that you can't really view from your car. So if you're going to that one business, you got to get up and then get out of your car to see whether you meet one of those businesses, and if not, you got to get out again and repark. Next slide. And it's also confusing and contradictory at times. So you see there's a public parking sign on the bottom left, but right next to it says, towing enforced, no parking. So if you're a new citizen, new person coming in to patronize the business, you don't know which one you're paying attention to. We also have sandwich board signs, which publicize the use of the Kaiser Garage, which is great. I think the Kaiser Garage is underutilized, and I'm really glad that we've got the agreement to park on Friday nights and on weekends. At night, though, that same sign is not visible. So clearly, when people are coming for a theater show or coming for dinner in the city, they don't know that's an available resource. Next sign. And when you actually look at the front of Kaiser Garage, it actually tells you Kaiser member parking only. Again, nothing tells people that it's actually open to public parking, other than if you're looking for those sandwich boards on the street. Next. And we actually have another garage. Most people in the city actually don't know about this one. This is the George Mason Square Garage, the Atlantic Garage. The signs that tell you where public parking is are actually buried in the garage, so that once you're in the garage, then you actually know that it's public parking. But they're actually contradictory, because on the South Washington exit, with that middle picture, it actually tells you that you can do visitor parking in that per deck, but technically, you're not a visitor if you're one of the ones that's using the city public spaces. You're only allowed to use the lower deck. So again, just contradictory all around, not very friendly for people who are visiting the city. And I was going to say, on the George Mason Square Garage, we actually have a more generous agreement in place currently. We actually are allowed to use the bottom level on all weeknights, so not just Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. It's all weeknight, so it's actually a really good benefit for the city. Next slide. And then where we have interspersed with private spaces, the signs are confusing. So you see in that left photo, it tells you two-hour private parking, but obviously, the space to the right of that is a public parking one. So it's inconsistent. We've got, again, faded markings on the streets or on the lots where it says two-hour public parking, but half the ones you can't read. So a lot of times, people are confused whether they're actually allowed to park there. Next. So what are people doing about it? Well, everyone's really taking the matter in their own hands. What's happening is everyone's creating their own version of their parking maps. A couple of businesses actually post them up there, tell you where you're actually allowed to park. The good news in some places, there are shared parking arrangements happening. Some people have unofficial agreements among businesses that, oh, if you let your customers park here, we're not going to tow you. So it's good to see these things happen, but clearly, I think people could, we could it's good to see these things happen, but clearly, I think people could, we could use some help, I think, in the downtown area. Next. So, this is hot off the presses. Slide 12 actually shows the towing data. So, we actually review monthly towing reports that show kind of the toes across the city. What I've attempted to do here is actually categorize the toes by area. And so, a couple major takeaways. One, clearly, towing spiked in the summer of 2018. However, one of the biggest, the biggest spike was actually in May 2018. So, despite all the talk about June and going forward, May was actually our biggest month. We had 87 total toes, and majority of those due to Memorial Day parking. And you'll see that the red bar is where, between the 300 and 500 blocks, where the majority of that toes happened. So, despite all the hype about towing that was increasing in the city, May was actually, well before the summer started, was actually when most of the towing happened. The biggest contributor of towing since the summer, though, is in the 100 and 200 blocks. The one thing I will caveat, though, is that it's relatively small sample size. And so, as you look into the details of the toes, because what we can actually see is who called in the toes, where the toe specifically was made, is it really is dependent based on property owners. Some months, a property owner may choose to enforce a tow, other months, they won't. And so, it's really dependent. You can't really say, "Well, okay, this, we're having a big trend here, because we're seeing it all the time," because it really is people-dependent. But it is worth noting that besides the downtown, which is the 100 to 200 blocks there, the other big areas that are contributing toes is the green bar, which is South Maple, as well as the red bar, the 300 to 500 blocks. And Ed, Sally, and Andrea feel free to jump in. I'm trying to speed through the presentation. Any questions so far on kind of what we're seeing out there? Okay. Next slide. So, two recent quick ones. Since this working group has been convening since the beginning of the year, two things that we've advocated for. One is, let's add on-street parking spaces where we can and the right-of-way. And so, we've added about 25 spaces along Park Avenue and along North Maple. So, those are in the city right-of-way. And I personally was a big fan of them, because it also helped slow down traffic. That was one of the concerns we heard from people a lot of times, was around traffic calming benefit. And we have noticed that that has helped that intersection a bit. And then, a new parking map is the other. So, with everyone creating their own version of parking map, we thought a universal parking map designating where all the public spaces are would be really helpful. And so, in the next slide, we'll show you what the parking map looks like. It's already uploaded on both city websites, thefalschurchva.gov and choosefalschurch.org. And so, it highlights all the public parking spaces, the on-street spaces, and then a couple of kind of notable businesses and areas, landmarks in the city. So, thank you, staff, for moving quickly on that, because I think that's helpful, especially as we look towards kind of downtown tree lighting and other city events, be able to have a good parking map for people to know where to access all the parking. Next slide. Skip this one next. Skip. So, initial recommendations. Slide 18 and 19 is going to be a lot of information on there, but that is kind of the laundry list of recommendations from the working group. Next slide. And you'll see them in, let's skip this one. The next one, there you go. There's your four buckets. Majority of the recommendations that we want to go after, our ones are highlighted in red. Those are the ones we perceive to be lowest cost, lowest risk, and highest impact. So, if we believe that currently the issue we have is that we have enough parking as it is, but we believe people have a hard time finding the spaces, let's help people get to those spaces. And so, a lot of the recommendations we have are around, let's make sure that people have the parking maps out there, let's increase our communications, let's paint those spaces so that they're distinguishable and easy to find, make it easy for people to access those garages and know that it's out there, lit signs on the garages. Imagine on the front of the Kaiser Garage or the George Mason's Garage, a sign that turns on when it's public parking time and it turns off when it's not. So, if you're coming to the city for the first time, you don't have to look for those sandwich boards. You know that that's a garage that's available to you. And then, in general, kind of revamping the parking signage around town, beyond probably the downtown area, using the kind of big, universal P-signs. I think we had good intentions, again, to use the little city logo, but the signs ended up being pretty small, and they're cluttered with a lot of other signage out there. I think Jim Snyder also had an idea around kind of an info kiosk in the corner of Park and Maple that actually helped put some of the parking information on, and really parking enforcement. So, doing spot enforcement of those two-hour zones that Wyatt mentioned earlier could really help increase turnover. We have a bunch of those around Park Avenue. If we want to make sure that those are available for businesses, we could do increased enforcement in those areas to show people that we're really serious about them. So, that's kind of the first bucket of recommendations. The second is new opportunities. So, where can we actually add spaces? We believe there's still more along Park Avenue at Little Falls and South Maple. There might be opportunity to actually realign spaces in that shared lot in the 100 block of Park Avenue. So, if we think about milling and repainting those spaces, there might be opportunity to actually add more spaces as we actually restripe. And then, a bunch of other recommendations I won't talk about now for time. Next slide. So, the third bucket is really more comprehensive. So, where does parking fit in with all the other transportations that we've talked about with the CACT? Given that our last parking utilization study was done in 1998, it's been 20 years. And so, if we, you know, currently, our hypothesis is that we have enough parking, we just need to help people get there. So, you saw the evidence on how we don't do a great job telling people how to get to that public parking, but it's probably worth updating the study, given that it's 20 years old. So, that's kind of the next big recommendation we have. Besides going after a bunch more of that low-hanging fruit, the low-cost, easy stuff, we really recommend that we update the utilization studies, that we have additional data, and that'll inform other strategies. One thing that we haven't talked about is metered parking. I think in general, we weren't opposed to the idea of paid or metered parking, but we really wanted the data from a study to kind of inform whether that's a good next step. And then, the last goal or kind of bucket of recommendations is really how to have more efficient parking behavior. And that's really, I think, what we view the city's role, which is to really encourage and facilitate shared parking. So, remember that aerial map that we showed, that showed just a lot of parking out there? If we believe that we should have enough parking, one of the big recommendations from the 1998 study is that people should share their parking. And how do we encourage that? And so, there's a bunch of ideas that we've looked at from some experts like Jeff Speck on how to actually incent shared parking among businesses, one of which is extending the city's liability insurance. So, one of the hurdles we often hear from people is that they don't want to share parking, because, "Oh, I don't want someone to fall in my parking lot, and then I get sued." So, one thing that I think staff's already started looking into is whether we can extend the city's liability insurance so that people feel like that barrier's not there, and they'd be more likely to share parking with the public after hours. Because when you look at the uses in the downtown area, there are a fair number of businesses during the day, but at night, they may actually have their parking lots open. Another option could be stormwater tax credits, snow and ice removal. And then, a couple of interesting things that actually came from Jeff Speck was around kind of a parking cash-out idea. So, employers could offer a parking cash-out so that for spaces that were originally allocated to those employees, if they don't use them, you actually get a cash bonus. Because often places, people don't actually, may not need a parking space. And instead of using a stick approach where they get penalized or have to pay for their parking space, it's more of a carrot approach, where if you're not going to use that space I'd save for you, I'll give you an extra $25 on your paycheck. So, that is the recommendations in a very fast 15-minute pace. I'll pause here and just ask whether Andrea, or Ed, or Sally want to jump in on any main things you want to highlight, given all the discussions we had.
Parking has been, you know, a long time. We've talked about it, tried to do a few things about it. But I think one thing through Letty's leadership is that I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation, and I think you can't drop all of this stuff all at the same time. But I think over time, I think there should be a shift in attitudes towards what rational parking, rational use of space should be. I think we should look for, so, I think this is great. And the only problem with Letty is she doesn't have enough energy.
[laughing]
And if she could just ratchet it up a little bit, we would be, you know, we would be better. But, you know, I think there's some easy things to do, and then the harder things. And most of the harder things has to do with cooperation and getting the building owners, you know, to work with us and do that. So, I think we should do things like look for some early adopters, find some ways to buy people off. When you think about it, if we're going to go build parking, if we think we need more space in a certain area, because even though we may have enough space across the city, we don't have it in the right location, then if we buy property and build something and think about what that's going to cost, and if we take just a fraction of that and invest it in incentives for cooperation, I think we're going to get a much bigger bang there. And that may not go over really well quickly, but I think over time, I think people can kind of get used to the fact that there is an economic incentive here to cooperate and put your parking into some sort of a rational, shared commune of some sort. And the EDA is really interested in this, because this is all an economic issue. If we're driving people away, then our taxes are going down, and our businesses are suffering as a result of that. And even a building that isn't a retail, it's maybe a commercial building, is, the value of that building really depends upon the vitality of the city. And if the vitality of that city, of the city is clipped off because of parking, then that building owner, even though they're not retail and they're only, maybe even only attracting their own employees, has a less valuable building. So, I think there's a lot here that we can do, but I think it's going to take some time, and it's going to take leadership, which, you know, which I think we have, to, you know, really get some changes going.
The Chamber's been working, or working on, we've been talking about this at least for, I don't know, two decades. So, thank you to Councilmember Hardy for taking this on and for actually taking it step by step and really doing the research. When she says, you know, "We've talked to certain people," it's really Letty, [laughing] who's done most of that. One thing that wasn't mentioned is that we are planning on getting a group of property owners and businesses together between now and the end of the year to really try to start building some of those relationships. Some of the, as I think a lot of you know, some of the older property owners and the newer property owners aren't necessarily getting along, and they don't, they are feeling so worried about their own parking, and they're not really thinking about the bigger picture. So, I think if we get these people together with their counterparts and with the other businesses in and around there, I think that's going to go a long way to helping without costing any money, although we did talk about having a little reception. So, that's $100. But thank you very much for putting this together and for plotting it out so clearly, because I think, as we've been talking about this for so long, we haven't really kind of put it in the buckets you put it in. And we haven't had all the different stakeholders' perspectives. So, I think this really helps. Nor have we had the map of all of that concrete, which is really quite striking.
I just wanted to add my thanks to Letty, too. I thought that she put together an amazing overview of the problem. For me, it's the photos that really bring it to life. And I know I've been in that situation where it's like, "Can I park here?" "I don't know." It's, "This sign says yes. This sign says no." And I would just encourage you not to lose sight of the idea of metered parking. I feel like the city is in a transition mode right now, and we are becoming more urban. And something that maybe didn't feel like it would have been appropriate in five years from now may feel very appropriate. And so, I would just encourage you all to be open to that idea.
All right. We are back. We are back. Why don't we come out of a closed session, do our certification, and then go on our merry way, hopefully. Upon a motion made by a council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by a council member...
Lichtenhouse.
And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Lichtenhouse.
Yes.
Snyder is not here, absent, on work. Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tarter, yes. It is, what is it, 11:55?
55.
Here's the certification. Upon a motion made by a council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by a council member...
Zee.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was confirmed that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder's absent. Zee?
Yes.
Tarter, yes. Okay. All right. What else we need to talk about tonight? Anything?
Moves adjourned.
All right, let's do it.